This is my mom's doctor just shows a picture of her dog. I know. It's got all the whole fur of the husky. The little tail and the curly or the curly tail and the purple tie. So cute. She's thinking of the most. Dog on the planet.
And some of them want to the to the rent.
Yeah. Well, it's the point that it's bonded with her parents more than she. But I thought of you when you mentioned it, Chow. I was like, oh.
For trying. For trying to be happy for anyone. I've got seven thirty-two. What's called meeting in order of what religions?
Nations by the United States of America, into the Republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
We call please uh trustee Thorn. Here trustee Diatley.
Here.
Trustee Hurney.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Trustee McGuire.
Here.
Trustee Bo.
Here.
We've got six trustees out of six attending. We've got a full vote. We've got a meeting. We've got a forum. So let's move on. The next item on the agenda is the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of February fifth, two thousand twenty-four?
I move.
Second.
Motion by both seconded by Harley to approve the minutes of February fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Are there any corrections to be noted?
There's a good piece on here. Oh, oh.
Are you new here?
Good piece. Where where did I miss fill it?
Bottom of page one.
And the interesting thing is I just Tony and redo those. So it's actually Tony's mistake. I didn't check. Ah, I will fix that.
Okay, no other corrections in the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are so approved. Thank you all. Uh, President's Report. We start out with the civility pledge this evening. Kelly Thomas.
In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we all are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, next item with the President's Report is the village survey. Rolled that up the fly pole at the last meeting. We've had some conversation with Eugene to correct it. What we got in the packet tonight? Are there any other comments, questions about it? We've got.
Is it uh three? Um, on number six, we have they've employed location of employment. I was just thinking considering after COVID, a lot of people work from home. Could we put an option of work from home on there?
Well, that's why it's other DNA.
Does not apply.
Okay, but could we put a specific one that says work from home? I thought it'd be I would be curious about the finding out how many people are working from home.
Sure.
Um, and then.
Companies and maybe one of those company or counties.
What's that?
What if they're companies in one of those towns?
The way it's phrased is location of employment to me reads like where are you working instead of like finding out if people are commuting. I think it's relevant with respect to travel versus staying in in the village. Um, and then under sixteen, I just wanted to confirm G says pursue annexation of lands adjacent to the village on the south. We're talking down on Bonkovsky area. Okay, I was just curious for my own sake. Uh, and then H um seek to improve Lake Sharon. I'm sorry, no. There was a question about the dam. Oh, uh, F repair the failed dams along Sleepy Creek that create the lakes, the village's lakes. I certainly think it's a valid question, but can we even can we even correct the dams? I thought the Army Corps of.
Ford.
Well, not even the question of affording, but I thought Army Corps of Engineers didn't even want us to touch it, let alone.
No, we could restore or we put uh we move.
Okay, we are allowed to do that.
Army Corps will give you a permit with a lot less hassle if you say you're removing it.
Sure.
If you say you're restoring it to get ready for a long winter.
Okay, I thought that they had I thought that they'd already said absolutely couldn't so.
That they've never told us that.
Okay.
They just told us that we're not gonna let men do replace it in the store.
Then the only thing I'd like to change is six.
It's up to us to, you know, to find that out.
Yeah, I think people have some opinions on that. So I would like their feedback. Then that's it.
I I changed the format a little bit to shorten it to get it down to two pages. Um, so it'll be cheaper to mail.
Sounds good. Well, I think two pages will be good because if you have it longer, you're gonna lose people on it. So I think it's good that it's still keep it.
Yeah, the last thing is if you've got any other suggestions, it's a blank piece of paper. Might.
Right.
Okay, I got a question. Um, open space number twenty-seven. Says the village owns a substantial amount of open space, right? It's borders, much of which has limited access to residents. And somebody that might me as to where that is.
It's it's scattered throughout the village. We've got like little lots here and there, but like there's a corner of joy and.
Right there between Winmore and Willem is a big green space.
Winmore and Winwood.
Yeah. Between. Okay. Running from uh west side of uh Winmore all the way over to Locust is a green area that is difficult for people to access unless they live against a buddy. And there's been questions. Is that in the original plan for the village was supposed to be a walkway?
Uh huh.
We've never invested any money.
Okay.
We've never put any signs in there. We've never made a walkway. And the question has been, do we want some people have asked, are we ever going to do it?
So that's what.
That's part of that.
Okay. And that's where twenty-nine comes in. I would use marked walking paths on open space.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, you have to remember that if you stick a signpost in the ground, there are people that consider it technically a structure.
Okay.
And structure highlighted in village broadly next step.
Okay.
Joe remembers those discussions with Mr. Uh. Walt. Have fun.
Okay.
So that was do we put posts up to mark these side on these entryways? Or do we just leave them there for you to know about?
Okay.
Somehow.
Uh, I was just making sure these weren't leftover questions.
Well, it's sort of a leftover, but it goes back to, you know, the the original thing Walt was against was the amount of signs that are showing up in there.
Okay. Those many came off. Century had nothing to do with this. Back then, it could have. Okay.
Any other questions? Then we have approval to send this to the printer and put it in the envelope and send it off to the residents with the sticker.
Oh, and I just wanted to say I appreciated the change of the questions, something about rural environment last time, and we have stuff about two different types of fences as well as the sheds. So I thought that was much more clear. So thanks for that. Get the nail in the head.
I I got input from three of the trustees and I did my best to incorporate what they wanted. Some of them were opposing, so I just kind of split the baby.
I I got a kick out of the old question number seven, but I remember right. Do you plan to be living in Sleepy Hollow in five years? And I I hope so. My doctor thinks I'm. So we changed that or Eugene changed.
You're a resident.
You expect to be a resident in Sleepy Hollow, so.
I'll be haunting Sleepy Hollow the next five years.
Are there any things that gets good?
Okay.
Thank Eugene for going through all this.
Yeah, thanks, Katie. Thank you.
We have a motion second to approve the uh survey as presented and authorize its publication with the on the vehicle stickers.
So the.
With second terms.
Moved by the at least second by Thomas to authorize the publication distribution of the Sleepy Hollow Resident Survey along with the village sticker application to go out next month. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Not roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Thorn.
Aye.
Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Trustee Hurney.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee McGuire.
Aye.
Trustee Bo.
Aye.
Six primary votes, no negative votes. Motion so carries. Thank you all. This will be the easy part. The fun part will be deciphering the results when we get on that. Okay, that is it for the President's Report, Court's Report.
Uh, I got a couple things. First of all, I want to thank Eugene and Sharon, both of them especially because Tony gave me all kinds of lists and otherwise the things to do and how to do it. There's always things that come up that aren't included in that. And Eugene and Sharon have both been extremely helpful in working our way through that. So I want to thank them for that. Um, you should have got an email today. Just dealer sent me the revised village map as a PDF, which um he says he keeps our revised basic and cow goes, it's not there. He takes it off the map. So water mains that didn't weren't there and otherwise. So you should all have a copy of that. And that actually pulled around with the village. Open space, which just by much should be all labeled on there. And then also you should have got an email yesterday from the village newsletter editors for approval. So I think Steve will be looking for a motion to approve that newsletter be sent out. So that's all I have. Questions?
Motion to approve the newsletter? Is that what you're looking for?
I don't know.
A second.
Move by McGuire, seconded by Bo. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
I have a question. Are we gonna be able to mail that to the residents instead of the website?
Hmm, we don't have fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars for a sign for postage on that.
Well, the the reason I'm asking is because there's a lot of information we're trying to get people to see about the upcoming activities. Now, everybody reads the we- website and we're trying to get people, you know, because we are trying to do these fundraisers for the service club and for the village as well. And I think that they'll read the if we mail it this one time, they'll.
We mailed them the one in the summer for the Fourth of July.
Right.
So now we're going to do two mailings for them.
Well.
Yeah, the the service club hasn't offered to pay for the mailing. They're just asking for the help. We've got to come up with fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars to to print it and mail it.
So if I went back to the service club and asked them for some money, would we could we potentially split it with them or if they have?
We could split it with them.
Could we? Would we be able to do that if I went back to them and ask them? I just think that it's it would be good. I think we'll get a better.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've gone through this for the years.
Right. No, I know.
It's seven thousand dollars a year for a newsletter. And yeah, it's just been difficult to come up with that money and then to get the newsletter together and then to get it printed and out that five years ago, the boards decided the digital world is here. You know, now all of a sudden it's like the digital world should be shut down and we should go back to.
And I'm not saying it should be shut down. I'm just saying.
That's why we did go with the Fourth of July. That was the one the the service club came and said, you know, we need help. We need help.
Can you give me a few days before we?
Hmm, well, it's a ditch.
I mean, it'll be a digital, but we could still mail it if I get a later day.
Later day.
Okay.
Do we make copies available?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there are copies here.
Right.
And I do email everybody to um so to tell them it's on the website and e- email them a copy. So.
There's, you know, an alert goes out that it's
Right.
Been released. And, you know, we went through this uh time and time again. How many people wanted a mail come?
Right, I remember that. Right.
Contact us. I don't think we've got three people that ever contacted us about having a copy mailed.
Maybe there should have been a survey question.
I think it is.
It is.
It's uh seventeen or eighteen. Yeah.
I'll I'll go bear to them and then I'll let you know and then we can regroup with it because.
All right, on the main motion. All in favor, signify by saying.
I had a question. So Jenny, what was the event that you're putting in the newsletter?
Uh, the Pinewood.
Oh, the car. Okay.
Derby. It's in there.
Okay, roll call, please. I know we're not we're not money here. This is digital. Got me off on the track there with money. I wasn't gonna let it go. Uh, okay, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The newsletter shall be released on the digital format in his own this evening, might imagine, but once I get the word. If they're listening, you can release it. Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's all. That is all.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Uh, planning and zoning. Mrs. Detmers with us remote today. Anything for the trustees?
There we go. Sorry. Um, the planning and zoning commission uh requests that the village approve its twenty twenty-four schedule of meetings. That list was uh provided in your packets. Um, that was by unanimous vote. Um, as the alternate will be the fourth Monday of each month, if a public hearing or meeting continuations or some special um action is deemed necessary to meet a second time during the month.
Okay. Anything else this evening?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the uh P and Z's calendar of meetings for the fiscal or for the calendar year twenty four. So.
Second.
Moved by Arnie, seconded by Bo to approve the calendar for the P and Z for the calendar year twenty twenty-four. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion so carries. Your dates are approved.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Detmer. Uh, moving on to the next item is the authorities report. We have nothing from Mr. Schuster this evening. So we move on to the engineers report. We've got a review from Mr. Steele. We'll pick that up a little bit later. Okay, let's switch this to number ten, Director of Finance, Mr. Van.
Request a motion for the approval of the accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, forty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by McGuire to approve the warrants of February twentieth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, forty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Ready? I'm ready for a okay conversation.
I had a question for Barb. Uh, Barb, on your invoice that is part of the thing, what does it mean with reinstated expired permits? It's just that they've lapsed and they haven't finished their projects?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they permit is valid for a hundred eighty days. And i- instead of going from just the date of permit, like many communities, I try to utilize the last inspection as that benchmark to give the citizens additional time. But in this case, um, the the one, if you notice, is like sixty dollars instead of one twenty. They had the first of the two required inspections. So there's a prorating time for depending on how far along in the in the uh project they are. The other two, they had never asked for any inspections. So there was no way of documenting that any work had actually been done on those. So they had to they just paid the full amount.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Mimic, please read aloud.
I will. Uh, trustee Hurney, uh trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Thorn.
Aye.
Trustee McGuire.
Aye.
Trustee Bo.
Aye.
Six primary votes, no negative votes. Motion so passes. Thank you all.
The website update did not go well. Um, it has been nothing but frustration and um links that I had in there were broken and the way they had done stuff was completely different and where they dumped, I had stuff in different sections by year and they just dumped it all together and then um it has been a nightmare. And as I get time, I'm trying to put it back together again. But it is, I I pretty much have to go page by page to um to fix it. Um, they finally gave me access to the old site so I can have something to compare to based rather than just my memory and um the project manager is now frantic because he knows I am not a happy camper.
But I'm fine.
And but there's, you know, he's he's not offering any solutions to.
This is the new code website or?
This is the new base product of the website.
Okay.
So it was like Drupal five before and it's like Drupal nine or ten now. And they do things differently. One of the things they did was they killed my entire email subscription list and everybody has to reapply to it. And they didn't warn me ahead of time so I could have sent an email out to everybody to say, hey, by the way, this is gonna happen. So I am starting from scratch. The only person email I have on there is my own.
Can you forward us the link for or the stuff for that so we can pass that too? Try to.
Sure, I can. I can do that. But um it it like I said, there is a a place on the website and and I don't like the way they had it set up before. It was much simpler to, you know, submit your email address. You know, now they want all this other information with it that, you know, wasn't necessary before you just put in your email address, but they want you to kind of create an account so that you can update your, you know, your settings and stuff like that then.
That's what the sign is about.
Yeah.
And there's a charge for doing that.
No, there's there's.
I read it. I from the app. Oh.
Oh, for the app. There's yeah, there was in-app in-app purchases.
Because you would do it through the app and then there was your recharge.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm not aware of that.
And I I figured I was on the wrong side.
I did. Is this applied to the trustees?
Yeah, so I I, like I said, have not been a happy camper as far as this goes and and one of my biggest problems is that we never got spam from the uh contact submission forms. And now I'm getting spam every single day. And they're saying, oh, well, we can't put the captcha on it. We can't, you know. And so you're you're just stuck with it. So now every day I I'm getting all these spam Russian bot stuff.
Should we um should we call them in here for a meeting and rather than do this over the phone or?
I'm I I'm when I get it fixed, I am going to send the Nastagram to say that this was you know, part of the problem is that we were one of the first for them to update. And like I said, I think this was.
Because we were new.
Yeah, we were a newer we were a newer one. And I believe that the guy who the project guy was a newer employee because I would ask him questions about this stuff and he didn't have a clue. And so he would have to go and research it and stuff.
And there's no way to return to the earlier version?
We're looking at here.
Yeah, we got we got Kansas Code of Learning.
And it's Kansas on our page.
So.
Interesting.
It it's like I said, I I had just been very frustrated with it and and during budget time was not the time to.
No.
Okay. Um, I wanted to give you guys a heads up on on what the budget is. Um, we the finance committee met today and they came up with some recommendations. Um, there's some minor changes to the budget that you have and but they recommended that we approve the budget in the the five-year capital improvements. Um, they also recommended that um we increase the parking sign fee. I don't know. I have to apologize also. Um, Wendy used to be the one who kept up the um ancillary fee schedule. And I thought I had the latest version and I did not. So some of the fees in there are old, so I had to fix them. But um the finance committee uh recommended that we increase the that parking sign fee to four dollars per sign rather than two dollars per sign and then two dollars of that was returned. Um, I guess because of the cost of replacing those signs, they're getting pretty beat up. Um, they part of the situation is is that all our funds are able to meet their expenses with the exception of the sewer fund. Um, basically, the only thing that the sewer fees are covering are the direct charges for um the waste treatment that we send to um West Dundee for the maintenance utility system, maintenance line item and the miscellaneous um maintenance. Both of those are about forty-five thousand each. Those are the only three items that are actually covered by that by our demand fee and usage fee. All the other costs like the their portion of salaries and postage and and all that kind of stuff, insurance, none of that stuff is covered. So um the problem with it is that we only have about a hundred and seventy homes that are on sewer. And that is not a large enough group to really support the system. If I were to um increase the sewer demand fee to cover all our costs, probably it would be a minimum of about twenty-six, twenty-seven dollars in addition to the fifteen, sixty we're already paying. So the at this point, to at least help a little bit, the uh finance committee had recommended that we increase the fee by five dollars or the demand fee by five dollars. So it would be twenty dollars and sixty cents. And that would be effective May first. Um, the other recommendation, um Jet had given us the proposal for Crane, which was a four hundred and forty-six thousand dollar project. We only have about a hundred and forty thousand of MST coming in and we are depleted when we did Locust. We had leftover funds from Sleepy Hollow Road, which allowed us to do Locust. Well, now all that excess money we had is gone. So we're pretty much starting from scratch and um part of the the situation with with Crane is that we can either do a multi-year project or try to do it in sections. Um, you know, here you're gonna be stopping and starting the paving and stuff like that. There there's three three basic components. It's the paving of the road. It is putting a curb in and then also putting in the storm sewer. We had the Deco grant for two hundred thousand dollars. We committed to Deco that we would buy a mini excavator with approximately a hundred thousand dollars, which then left us another hundred thousand dollars to do swale work with and engineering and stuff like that. It would be within the scope of that project to do the storm water drainage on Crane. So we could still use the mini excavator down the line, but use that hundred thousand dollars for that storm drain. Um, the finance committee recommended that what we do is each year we've from the five-year cap, we fund a hundred and twenty thousand for non-MST road projects, which is what helped us with um Locust. So we would use two years of that for the Crane project and not fund it for twenty twenty-six. And so then hopefully we should be able to have enough money to actually do the entire project in one year. Um, and the last recommendation from the finance committee that we had met this afternoon was to um look into initiating an actuarial study to find out what the cost would be to get into a pension fund. An IR and a pension fund. Um, I had talked to other village treasurers in Hampshire just did this process. And the cost to a village varies greatly. What happens is that nine percent comes out of the employee part. The other part, which is generally a match of nine percent, would come out of the village. However, the way the pensions are structured is that it's not a set percentage. So for Hampshire, their first year, they only had to pay two percent. But their second year, they had to pay thirty-two percent. What happens is that the village has to make up for any market losses. So it could be very expensive down the road. So but the the good thing is is that we would then be able to retain employees. A a lot of our employees leave because they say that we don't have a pension system. And uh they can go somewhere else, not only make more money, but also have a pension. Uh, we recently lost and, you know, a couple of employees because of that specific issue. Um, I've got some feelers out to my treasurer's group to see what, you know, their experience were was for the cost of an actuarial study, but um I don't think it's going to be cheap. And that's kind of it. And that's kind of it.
Five, can I comment please? I agree that the actuary says, I think it's well needed. Um, I know since I've been on the board in a liaison with police and public safety, we have continually lost officers because we don't have a pension plan and we don't, our salaries aren't there. We have raised salaries in the past, um, and brought them up slowly to as much as we can. Um, I feel what we lose in retraining officers and starting over uh, with everything could make up some of that. Um, so that's my hope. Um, because we, for a while until Chief got here, we went through a lot of officers. Um, that has slowed with, when Chief came on board, he's done a great job of, of, uh, you know, taking care of things and making sure things run, but I think we have to seriously look at this pension plan. No matter what the cost is, because we have to look at it and say, what's it gonna save us on the other side of it? With training, officer turnover and everything that we lose and we start all over again. Uh, we want to have employees that we value and keep in this village. People want to know they're police officers and, you know, we want them to know the people in the community. So I think it's something we have to really get some hard thought to.
Is there a way to get actual numbers of those for maybe like a three-year process?
Um, I think.
How much is lost with turnover?
Yeah, I'm sure we can probably come up with some numbers after Chief and I can, you know, go through it and come up with some numbers.
The numbers of people who have left here?
Who have left here.
No, no, no. He said that the, the, the training cost for the turnover, the what, what losing the people due to that reason, not retirement or, you know, other things, but due to that reason.
Yeah, we can come up with some numbers on that.
And I think the other unknown, if I might, the other unknown figure that's always going to be the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room is going to be that you're turning over officers with the new state mandates with the training. Um, regardless of whether I hire an officer this week or the officer's been here for ten weeks, for ten years, that officer has to be current on all the state mandates. Anytime an officer's not current on a state mandate, if something happens, we incur liability. So the sizes of the checks that you write for officers in terms of, you know, whether civil rights violations or lawsuits is much larger than I think anything that we would be looking at for establishing something to have a consistent, well-trained police force. So that's one of those numbers that's hard to quantify because it's just, you know, it's out there. We just don't know what it's gonna be, but I can come up with all the other numbers.
And I think just a ballpark, true idea.
The other item that I, I forgot was, um, um, the recommendation to consider eliminating the vehicle sticker in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. So, you know, I, the, the more I think about it, you know, I, I would like to see the vehicle stickers gone. A lot of communities have gotten rid of them. But then if we're trying to fund the pension, this might be.
Four or fifty thousand.
Would, would offset the, the cost of it.
Well, I think we need to get those actuarial numbers and we need to talk to, uh, the IRMRF people.
And I think, I think if I could just put, just put the thought in here, so we wanna raise the price of those signs. We just raised the vehicle stickers last year. We just raised taxes five percent. There was another thing in there. You know, how, how much more money are we gonna continue to ask our residents for? We can't continue to nickel and dime our residents. It's getting ridiculous.
I, I, I overtly agree. But, you know, again, the.
We don't have much choices. Look at our commercial bits. Give us an option. Give us, you know, what do we have? And commercial today is totally different than what it was twenty years ago. Ask West Dundee. And they were riding high with mall. And now.
Well, now they own it.
Well, now they have to do. Let's see, that means.
Maybe they should put a storage facility in there.
Is an interesting number to look at. The debt per capita of Sleepy Hollow is about a hundred and fifty dollars. The debt per capita in West Dundee prior to the purchase of the mall was about seven thousand dollars. The debt per capita in East Dundee is about thirteen thousand dollars. The debt per capita in Elgin is about seven hundred dollars. The debt per capita in Carpenter is about eight hundred dollars.
Actually, we will be debt-free come November.
We will still be marked with a hundred and fifty.
You know, it.
Good, we still pay our bills.
But business sense, maybe we recruit a little bit of debt, maybe accrue like West Dundee's may be onto something by owning some of their commercial property and that's.
We don't have any land to buy.
Well, there's the, the land behind, uh, behind Casey's, there's the new storage lots up for sale, the lot in front of Dunkin' Donuts, there's.
There's a couple of places. We've got Mr. Hoff has been working. He's located the owners of the property and he's talked to them to see about moving forward, to see if there's anything that the village can help them with. I, you know, Floyd handcuffed us sixty-five years ago when he said that a municipality could live on its rooftops.
At what?
A municipality could live on its rooftops. Property tax. You go to any municipality around here and ask them if they're living off their property tax. They're not. You need some kind of commercial base.
And I think that.
The only thing we can do is keep our property up.
Right.
That's, yeah.
I think the people that live here in the village were very lucky to have what we have for little of what we pay, like. You know, if I had to increase my taxes, I would, just to keep the village going in the way it is because I like it here. I like what we have here.
But it's hard to keep it up.
No, I, I, but I know, I know what you're saying. It is hard to keep it up. But I don't think we should be afraid to ask the residents. I get that we've increased this and we've done that.
Unique cost.
Yes, exactly.
If you're gonna be unique, you might have to pay a couple of bucks more than.
You know, that, that was why I tried to hold the line and the only things where we were increasing were the signs. So it's gonna basically cost an extra five bucks and that's if they get signs. And the sewer is a, only affects a very small portion of the village. We were holding the line on every other cost because we're, we're okay actually in, in the general fund. And as far as the five percent, you know, increase in the property tax, it's basically forty dollars per home.
That's right.
So it, it, it's, you know, I, I have done my best to, to, to keep, you know, the, the increases at a very minimum. You know, but yet still be able to fund the operations of.
Well, you're not the only one that's been working and keeping the cost down. Chief Parma's done the same thing. And Kyle Kellinger in Public Works has done the same thing. Mrs. Decker with the building has, you know, got those. We're not, you know, just throwing money left and right. We watch those nickels and dimes.
You know, when we do something that appears to cost money, it's usually for the long-term savings. It's like buying the mini excavator. Yes, it's a hundred thousand dollars today. But it is something that we can use for twenty-five years to save us, you know, ten thousand dollars a pop for every swale fix. So, you know, the, 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 the stuff we're doing is trying to pay for itself.
Well, that's like, but that's like the proof that we need coming back, like correct, but like that's why with the pension fund, we just need to see numbers.
Yeah, I said, that's why we need to explore. We're losing way too many employees.
Right.
And the timing just simply seemed to be an agitated or advantage to us. Advantageous to us is what I was looking to. Uh, but as part of this thing with the pension, the IRMRF, they can retire in twenty or thirty years, right?
Ten.
Ten. But if they've been working for us for three years, they can buy seven years. And we have, that means we have to buy seven years. So, you know, that's where we, that's the cost we don't know.
And we're at a point right now where we have relatively new employees with low years on. If we were fully staffed with people who had twenty, twenty-five years on, eh, we'd never be able to do it.
Cause they can go out and get a second mortgage and buy twenty-five years of their pension back.
Yeah.
And we'd have to match that twenty-five years.
Yeah, just for instance, I know when I first started with, um, liaison, police and public safety, Chief Linea was here at the time and at the time he had a running list and I know in that short year, he went through probably twenty-three officers. Came and went out of his place.
But Chief, didn't you say, you brought up today during the meeting about the bank boxes that you had at your old job and then it's quadruple.
Yeah, yeah, where I came from, the villages are about the same age, nineteen fifties they were formed and we had a total of two banker's boxes of employee files in that entire time. That's all we had. And, and that included the current employees' files. Um, I can take upstairs in the attic here and show you ten banker's boxes of employee files that we've gone through over the years and. And it's a, personal opinion is a disservice to the residents to not know your police officers, especially in small town. You really should know your officers, get to know them on a personal basis. I think you get better services that way and more commitment out of your employees.
So we're not gonna approve the budget tonight, but what I'd like you to do is look at it and if you've got questions, come and see me, email me or whatever, but, you know, we can finalize it then, you know, get it done before the, the year starts.
They did a yeoman's job on it today, getting through the thing. This is probably one of the earliest states I've seen a budget. If it had been on the well, it is on.
It is on.
We could probably prove it tonight or improve it, but I think you're right. We want to make the changes that the finance committee has suggested and bring it back at the next meeting for your review and approval at that point. And I said, we, we will definitely have, you know, more information about the pension and the, uh, cost going forward on that, before we make any more decisions.
Um, there was a question that had, had come to me about, um, swale work and stuff like that for drainage and it had been removed from the budget in previous years. But through the finance committee, uh, we talked about funding it for twenty-five thousand a year for each of the next five years.
No questions or comments, Mr.? Jane, anything else from you?
No.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, comment from the public. David, Jack?
All right.
You've got five minutes.
All right, sounds good. Appreciate your time. Chief Parma knows, probably won't hear. He's, everybody else doesn't. Recently went through the whole process of notice to appear in court for a ordinance violation. But, uh, what it sounds like, I'm not here to complain. I'm not here to gripe. That's not my MO. Um, I don't know his name, but the village attorney, Mr. Fleck. Chief Parma, all been very cordial, respectful through the whole process. Not here to complain. I'm not that guy. I want the same thing as you all, right? I am here however, to, for a, what I think is a common sense ask. Going with the civility pledge, trying to be cordial, I'm trying to ask for a little bit of reasonability to understand this particular situation. To show that I'm not just here to gripe. For instance, I want to work with you all. Again, I want the same thing. If you want me to get an army of teenagers to go stuff mailboxes to get these things out, save on postage, I'm in. I can probably get a team from my company to do a pro bono, rehaul of the website for free if we want to do that. I have a team of people at my work that do grant writing for municipalities that can try to help get us some funds if we wanted to redo dams or whatever. I'm willing to work with everything. But here's my situation. For the first nine years that I lived here, Mr. Fleck was one of the people that helped guide me through this whole thing. This trailer that's in question was never an issue for anybody. Those that are in the know, know that this complaint did not come from my neighbors. We don't need to go there, but I know for a fact that's not where it came from. This has not been a problem, is not an eyesore. If I go at the, the ordinance that we have, I am allowed to have a snowmobile trailer. When we were here talking about what we all wanted, the two main things that stood out were safety, a trailer of any time, for example, on a driveway, in hill, we don't want that, no matter what it is, size, whatever, safety is concerned. And the other thing was aesthetics. We don't want tarps. We don't want people putting stuff on grass, going around, all of that stuff. So here's what I'm asking for. What I'm getting is the, you can't have this trailer because it's a storage trailer. It is in fact not a storage trailer. For the entire time I've owned it, it is in fact a motorcycle trailer. It is registered as such on the title. The back gate has a big racing logo. It has a drop gate and a motorcycle wheelchair. I'm pretty sure that we don't want to say that we only allow snowmobiles. And if anybody knows what this is, it's motorcycle racing in the winter, which yes, is in fact the thing. I'm not here again griping, trying to work against you or be the, the conflict guy. I gladly pay for my camper that's oversized off-site because I think that's a reasonable rule. I keep my boat in the garage because that's a reasonable rule. I have a three-car garage, which now because we can't have sheds, I have both vehicles sitting outside and the covered trailer, that the whole point of the covered trailer is to protect a motorcycle outside is now inside. So a hailstorm, my nice expensive vehicles can get hit. It just doesn't make any sense. We both know that I can play the game and I could go get a, a, a snowmobile trailer that is literally twice as large, that could be marked and it could be uglier, bigger and more of a safety problem and that would be allowed. What I'm asking for is literally, if we can see this little teeny speck on this driveway that is hidden, that is, I mean, it's not in anybody's view. I can fit probably fifty of these things. It's smaller than my car. And I know that ratio thing isn't necessarily a thing, but it's licensed, it's insured, it's registered. It's not a cargo trailer. I don't have other junk. I follow every rule. But I think this is a little bit ridiculous. If I can have a snowmobile trailer, why can I not have a smaller, less ugly, non-marked trailer that is of smaller size than anything else we have? If I literally wanted to have a, of like go tit for tat, all of the language in here, this is not forbidden. Cause it is in fact not a cargo trailer. So I've paid the fine. I went to notice appear. Mind you, I missed half a day of work. Court's not the place to have this discussion. I know this isn't the discussion, it's my comments. But I missed the half days of work and in the entire time this went on, I live in a cul-de-sac that did not get plowed. The entire time, while I'm getting fined and my taxpayer dollars are going to pay for a lawyer and Mr. Fleck to drive around and find me for something we don't need. And then I notify them in advance. I've paid the fine. I've complied. Do we really want to waste money going to court? I still had to go to court. They knew in advance. So I'm spending taxpayer money to deal with something that is nonsensical and I'm not getting the service, basic service of plow the street. So that's my comment. Again, my ask is just please reconsider. This is not in fact a storage thing. It's not ugly. It's not an eyesore. It's not a safety concern. Can we allow it? Just like we've done for nine years. It hasn't been a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Can I request to see the painters, if he held up?
If he would like to send that information to the trustees, even more welcome to.
Oh, that's after the meeting.
Okay, fair, fair.
Okay, that's it for the, that's it for the, um, comments from the public and move on to the trustees reports, roads and parks. Mr. Honey?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. And, uh, finance, Mr. Thorn?
I don't think there's a whole lot more left to be said.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mark. Uh, water and sewer, Courtney.
Nothing, nothing to report.
And thank you, Courtney. Police and public safety, Mr. Galloway.
Uh, I don't have anything. Chief, do you have anything?
No, I've probably spoken more than I needed to so far. We'll, we'll talk after.
Okay, uh, building environment, Mrs. McGuire.
Nothing for me.
Thank you, Jennifer. Building anxiety, it's Thomas.
No reporter.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, brings us to old business. Twelve thirty-eight Timber. Yay. Uh, you all have in your packet, uh, twelve oh eight Timber is, they've got an application and to have a pool constructed in their backyard. They, I've asked for permission to utilize village property in this construction process in order to access their yard. The plans have been given to the village engineer and the village engineer has submitted his reviews and recommendations to the board on this request from, uh, the residents of twelve oh eight. So, discussion, comments, questions?
I don't have a problem with them u- utilizing that because it is their only access without going. I don't have a problem with them using utilizing that because it is their only access without going over their. Septic field or septic field, if they go the other way, it is the only way to get.
I've got a question though. What about Mr. Steele's comments?
Well, in his list of comments, a number of items. One of the items is that we get board approval. For the route of construction. So that's what we're talking about tonight.
Assured approval?
Yes, right. That takes care of one of the concerns. The site review was favorable as long as the concerns in this language. Are addressed. But he, the engineer, the village engineer recommends approval. For the permit as long as all the concerns are addressed.
Now, he's got almost about fifteen items that he brings up.
Right, such as protection. Things being well marked, but as far as the board is concerned, he's looking for board approval. For the route of construction.
Right, the residents are looking for board.
Right.
And the board has asked the village engineer for his recommendations. Now, the board's taking this into consideration to give the approval. They need to take in, are they gonna take in Mr. Steele's recommendations? Or you just want to go right ahead and carbox approval?
I don't think these are unreasonable. Requests for the resident, you know, like putting silk fence around, I mean, and. The tree, I don't think it's unreasonable requests. Some of the trees though are on village property.
And those are noted in there that they should be marked and shit. There will be no, there will be no removing of vegetation.
No, no.
Without village approval.
No.
There will be any, no, there will have to be insurance and bonding. The village will have to have a release of liability.
It's a very, very thorough list. My inclination is I would agree with the engineering's company.
So your motion, Mr. Approve Request. With. That the instructions of the engineer be followed.
So I moved.
I second.
Okay.
We were there.
Bo, to authorize the request from the residents of twelve oh eight Timber. Subject to meeting all of the requirements outlined in the village engineer's uh, letter. All right, we will transfer that information back to the engineer and to the resident. There was a motion in the second, wasn't there? Okay. Any further comments, questions, you discussion? If not. Uh, roll costs? Nah, it's no expense. Oh, money, they're gonna end up having to pay the bills. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's no opposition, the pass is unanimously. Thank you all. Okay, any other old business come before the board? No old business, go to new business. Under new business, Ms. Thomas.
Um, I asked President Pickett this evening to allow me to read the civility pledge. The reason is that someone has started inflammatory and baseless social media postings regarding my integrity. And commitment to the residents of Sleepy Hollow in our community. This is the second time this same person has gone down this same path. The first time was to my face. And now through social media, which I know none of us can get away from. It's the way of the world. My husband and I have been residents in Sleepy Hollow for almost thirty-six years. And I have been an advocate for this village and its residents far longer than I have been a village trustee. And I will continue to do so, given the opportunity and the privilege. As I've stated to many residents and board members, when someone goes after me, my family, my coworkers, my friends. Board and committee members, Public Works and Chief Parma and his department officers. Who all now fall into the category of friends for no reason, I will come out swinging. In defense of my reputation and the village that I support. I can and will admit when I am wrong and will also ask for guidance because this is all new to me. Just as my former bosses, fellow board members, Chief Parma and President Pickett. But I will also stand up for what I believe to be right. I have also said, if you have something to ask or say to me, don't hesitate to contact me directly because I will listen. I may not have the answer that you want to hear, but I will get the answer. Thank you for the time to share these comments.
Thank you. Okay, there being nothing else, these duplicate fifteen on the agenda.
Should do a adjournment, second.
Moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, we are adjourned.